At tonight's city council meeting, if you'll all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Rick Malagany with Fairhope Christian Church.
Most gracious and loving God, we thank you for this time to come in together to discuss the future of our fair city. We ask for wisdom and guidance as we make decisions and we ask for patience and peace as we go forward today and forevermore. In Christ name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. All right, council, as discussed in the work session, I think we need to put to bed the issue of the Christmas parade and ask the city attorney to hurriedly write a resolution. So I will ask for a motion to amend tonight's agenda to add a resolution to set the parade on Friday night, December 6th, and also to have the monthly traditional First Friday Art Walk on a special Saturday, December 7th. May I entertain a motion to add this to the agenda?
Some move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, agenda is amended. All right, first order of business will be to approve the minutes of the September 11th Special Budget Work Session, the 23rd September of September Regular City Council Meeting, Work Session and Agenda Meetings, and the September 30th Special Budget Work Session. Council, do you have any changes, additions or deletions you'd like to make to those minutes right now?
Make a motion, will you approve?
Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of approving as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, those minutes are approved. Thank you, council. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. Mine's going to be short and sweet. We've been working really hard on the budget, so I don't have a lot of city updates. But I am going to be out of town a couple days next week. I've been invited along with seven other mayors in the country to attend the Mayor's Institute on City Design. And, excuse me, it's a leadership initiative from the National Endowment for the Arts in partnership with U.S. Conference of Mayors. And the conference, it's all expense paid, so there won't be any city expenses paid on this. And a lot of experience is being brought to the table for eight individual mayors to do a presentation and anyway, they help us with some of the ideas. And I'm excited to come back and share those ideas with you. It started in 1986, and the city of Fairhope will be the third city in the state of Alabama to go through this three-day workshop. And the other two, Birmingham went through in 2018 and Mobile in 2014. Also, yesterday, I got back from our first day for leadership Baldwin County. I know a lot of people have gone through that with the city. And anyway, it was really thrilling. I had a great time and met a lot of different people from the county. It was great. We have our new junior city council here tonight, and I'd like to welcome them up front so I can present them for our new city board members for 2020. And just in case you get any ideas that, you know, were biased to girls, this is a blind selection based on essays. Okay. But we started the Junior City Council last October, and they're one-year terms. We have 10 council selected based on high school age. It doesn't matter what high school you go to, as long as you live in Fairhope. And the first year, I can't say enough about how much this group has accomplished. They're really paving the way towards really building awareness for their age group and communication, what's going on in the city and learning how city government works. Now, I'm going to put y'all on the spot because I don't have my sheet with everybody's name, but if you could come up, introduce yourself, what school you go to, what grade, and we'll take a picture.
Hello. I'm Isabella Tran. I go to Fairhope High School, and I'm in 10th grade.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kaylee Spears. I go to Fairhope High School as well, and I am a junior this year.
My name's Grayson McKean. I go to Fairhope High School, and I'm in 10th grade.
Hi, my name's Claire Kiernan, and I'm a senior at Fairhope High School.
Hi, I'm Isabella McCormick. I'm in 11th grade, and I go to Bayside Academy.
Hey, guys.
Thank you.
My name's Victoria Watley, and I go to Fairhope High School, and I'm in 10th grade.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item on tonight's agenda is public participation pertaining to agenda items only.
Hi, I'm Chris Miller. I'm a senior at Bayside Academy.
Good evening, everyone.
If you want to speak to items five through now 17 with the resolution that was added,
I'm Daria Leggett, and I'm a junior at Fairhope High School.
I'll ask you to please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you have business that is not on tonight's agenda, I would ask you to wait until the final public participation at the conclusion of the last agenda item. The floor is open. Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation for agenda items, and we will move on to council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir. I only have one, and it is to wish my oldest baby a happy 11th birthday and use this opportunity to encourage efficiency tonight so that I can get out in time to go have dinner with him on his birthday. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Great group in the Fairhope Junior City Council. Good to see y'all. A lot of familiar faces tonight. I only have one comment, and that's Fairhope Middle School Girls Cross Country Team won county championship yesterday, and we're undefeated this year, so congratulations.
Were you leading the charge with that however many mile run, 23-mile run that you made recently? Took about four days to finish?
I'm not setting the bar real high, but I did complete it, so.
Very nice.
Councilman Brown?
No comment tonight.
Councilman Boone?
Actually, no comment tonight.
I'll be real brief. I just want to thank the mayor and staff and the council for all your hard work on the budget. We're getting very, very close. We're almost there, so thank y'all for that. Item five is the final adoption of an ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number 1253, a request to rezone the property of Myrtle Bung, trustee of the Myrtle Bung Living Trust, from M1 Light Industrial to a planned unit development. Property is located on the west side of South Section Street, just south of Pecan Avenue in Fairhope. The parcel contains 5.22 acres, more or less, and this was introduced at the last city council meeting.
Evening, council. Council President, Mayor, Mike Jeffrey, city planner for the city of Fairhope. As Council President said, this is a request. There we go. Requesting a rezon approximately 5.2 acres from M1 Light Industrial to a PUD Planned Unit Development, approximately 300 feet south of the intersection of Pecan Avenue and Section Street. On the west side of Section Street, the applicant's proposing 15 single-family dwelling units with a requested density of 2.87 units. Up on the screen, on the left, is a zoning map with the subject property outlined in black. On the right is an aerial view. Draw your attention to the screen. This is the revised site plan provided by the applicant that has removed some of the, I don't know, some of the desire for the planning commission per their recommendations, which removes some items that would have required a waiver for some of the subdivision regulations. Hitting on some of the setbacks, they have a front setback of 20 feet, a rear setback where the alley is going to be, and referencing back to the site plan, they are using a 16-foot alley to go around the entire development as a common driveway to access the property. In the middle area of the subject property in the development is kind of a common area open space, a kind of a roundabout-style entrance. There is an entrance off of Section Street that attaches to an existing stubout of Summer Lane, just to the west side of the property. They have a side setback and a street-side setback of eight feet with a maximum building height of 30 feet and a maximum lot coverage of 32.5%. They have four parking spaces in the rear. Two are enclosed or covered, and two are outside. And that roundabout I was speaking about has room for 13 guest spaces with the desire and intent to have your guests being able to park out front of your house, to enter, and having the rear just your private entry and for use of the owners of the property solely. The staff is, you know, kind of excited about the idea. This is not your typical lot-and-block situation that we typically see, or a pod coming in trying to cram in a lot of small lots with a higher density. So it is an innovative design, has very minimal maintenance, and promotes a pedestrianally friendly environment. It's close to the downtown walking distance to the merchants that we spoke about earlier today, and they go into more detail in their narrative for their desires. Staff's recommendation is to approve without any waivers. Planning Commission recommendation was to approve rezoning from M1 to a PUD without granting any of the waivers as well. Casey Hill is here on behalf of Dewberry Engineers. They can answer any questions on her behalf, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have of staff.
Counsel, do you have any questions of staff or of the engineer? That was a unanimous recommendation, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. Hearing no questions, I will ask for a motion for final adoption.
Some move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, if you'll call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number six is a resolution. City Council of Fairhope desires to improve the wastewater collection and transmission system. The improvements include the implementation of side-stream storage vessels in key locations that will provide relief of peak flows to the wastewater treatment plant during heavy rain events. It will also reduce the potential for sanitary sewer overflows. There is one location on the property of RSA which has agreed to deed to the city of Fairhope. The city council approves the terms of the agreement at no cost to the city for the transfer of property from Retirement Systems of Alabama to the city of Fairhope for the use in the city constructing the desired side-stream storage facility. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the land.
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item seven is a resolution. City Council of Fairhope desires to operate and maintain key facilities in the wastewater collection and transmission system. Battles Road LLC has or is in the process of developing a 204-unit apartment complex on the northeast corner of Section Street and Old Battles Road. Lift station that was installed for this project may be utilized for additional flows from off-site developments in the future and can be managed during heavy rain events to minimize impacts to the downstream portions of the overall wastewater collection and transmission system. City Council authorizes the mayor to execute a maintenance transfer agreement whereby Fairhope Utilities will operate and maintain the lift station with an associated easement for rights of ingress and ingressor to property where the lift station is located. There are no upfront costs to the developer for Fairhope Utilities. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the maintenance transfer agreement?
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item seven is a resolution. City Council of Fairhope desires to improve the wastewater collection and transmission system. These improvements include the extension of the Phase 1 Transmission System improvements from Fairhope Avenue and Ingleside Street to areas east of Greeno Road, and will bypass flows from certain pumping stations to allow for more redundancy in the system and reduce existing lift station upgrades within the system described in the proposal from Dewberry dated June 17, 2019. Here's a copy in your book or on your MacBook. The city council approves the Dewberry proposal and authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement for the design fee anticipated to be $105,000, more or less, depending on the construction value of the project once bids are received. I will entertain a motion.
Some move?
We have a motion and a second to approve the Dewberry proposal and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing and consenting to the transfer of ownership, maintenance and responsibility for portions of Twin Beach Road, aka County Road 44 and Bishop Road in the city of Fairhope from Baldwin County. You can see that back on tab nine. There's a description. There's about 1 and 1/4 miles in total. Does anybody have any questions for Public Works regarding that? Pretty self-explanatory, pretty standard operating procedure. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to authorize and consent to the transfer of ownership, maintenance and responsibility?
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item number 10 is a resolution. The Council President, Jack Brill, is hereby authorized to execute a contract for professional services for closing costs and title insurance on the recreation land purchased with Kapeski and Britt LLC with a cost not to exceed $9,000. Entertain a motion?
Some move?
You have a motion and a second to execute the contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number 11 is a resolution. City Council approves resolution 3247-18 be amended for procurement of one-year rear-loading recycle truck for the Public Works Department. This is a three-year lease-to-own purchase, including freight, for a total buy in the amount of $155,999 to be leased through Bancorp South Equipment Finance or another local bank. Before we ask for a motion, Jimmy, what's your thoughts on this? Well, I'd like to have gotten to this in the work session a little bit, but...
Yes, is this one that we've already approved from the 2018, I mean, the 2019 budget year that we had intended to purchase this?
Yeah, Kim, could you come educate us on that again?
I prefer not to do the lease, but I mean, I think we've already, that's how we built it into the budget, right?
So this, my understanding, was actually in budget 2018 as a lease. And this was one that has been ordered and is expected to come in in November. So as I went through the paperwork, got with Marcus just to make sure, since staff told me that, hey, we have another truck. So this is the last one out of budgets 18 and 19 that y'all had to approve for leases. This is the last one to come in, so we had to just correct the resolution. The green sheet had Ashley on it for a lease, but the resolution that was done did not pick up to be a lease. It just had on the purchase. So we're just trying to correct.
Gotcha.
The documents. Now, at this point, if you're wanting to change...
I don't want to change something that we've already approved of that way, just moving forward.
So it's just trying to correct our paperwork that we have, you know, in line to authorize to do a lease.
Good enough for me.
Kim, are those three equal installments?
Yes.
Okay, no buyout at the end. True, we own the vehicle at the end of the lease.
We own the vehicle at the lease. This is just a financing mechanism to pay it over three years, and the interest rate, you know, right at 3%.
Okay. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion for the lease.
Some move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the lease purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 12 is a resolution. City of Fairhope vote to approve the procurement of the setup and rental of two sound stage lights and eight snow machines for the city of Fairhope lighting of the trees celebration 2019 from Sound Associates, Inc., for up to three one-year contracts with an annual cost of $10,500 with a total not to exceed of $31,500 for three years. Entertain a motion for the procurement?
Some move?
Second.
Two motions and two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution. City Council hereby amends resolution 3209-18 as follows, simply changing the name of the league from the American South Football Alliance to the IAFL Semi-Pro and changing the name of the team from the Fairhope Vikings to the Fairhope Storm. Well, that's not a bad omen, council. But anyway, I'll entertain a motion to amend that resolution.
Some move?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 14 is a resolution for the holidays for FY 2019 to 2020. You should see those in your book. There are, if you look at the second page of the resolution, you'll see, I don't see it listed, the personal day off, birthday or personal day after one year of service should be added to that. So nine and a half for less than a year, and it automatically carries over. Okay, all right. So I didn't see that, but just want to clarify, you know, for what it's worth, that that is, if you've been there a year, you do get a personal day or birthday off. So I'll entertain a motion to approve those holidays for FY 2019 to 2020.
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the holidays. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, holidays are approved. Item 15 is a recommendation from the Street and Traffic Control Committee requesting the city council's authorization to place an always-stop at the intersection of White Avenue and Equity Street to help with traffic. If you checked your boxes, there was quite a lengthy presentation put in there, but we had a very long discussion at a recent Street and Traffic Control Committee. I will say that at that meeting, it was very, very difficult to get something approved. In other words, things were vetted pretty toughly, and this was recommended for approval. It may have been, I think there was maybe one other item that was recommended for approval, and that had to do with some flashing speed limit signs to warn people when they're speeding. And we'll be bringing that before you for a vote pretty soon. But anyway, I'm on the Street and Traffic Control Committee, and we have police there, we have staff there, and the recommendation was for approval. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to place the always-stop at the intersection of White Avenue and Equity Street.
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 16, a request of Michael C. Walters, a location scout manager with Intermart Group/ VASTA Studios, requesting that the one-time $1,000 application fee and the $5,000 refundable deposit be waived due to the fact that this is a filming project for the State of Alabama Department of Tourism. They're filming four separate 30-second commercials in the following locations in Alabama, Auburn Opelika area, Montgomery, Gulf Shores, Orange Beach, and Fairhope Eastern Shore. So with that, they thought that they would be promoting tourism and that they should ask to waive those. And we actually have an ordinance that says you can't, but, you know, Lisa called and go, this is one of those times. It makes sense, and I agree, so I put it on here. So I'll ask for a motion to waive the one-time application fee and refundable deposit?
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 17 is a resolution. I'll read this because this is not in your book. It says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope that the date for the 2019 Annual Magical Christmas Parade shall be set on Friday night, December 6, 2019. The annual parade shall start at approximately 7:00 p.m. on the said date. Notice of said date change shall be communicated to all prospective and actual applicants. Additionally, Fairhope's monthly traditional First Friday Art Walk shall be moved once to Saturday, December 7, 2019, as discussed in the work session." I will entertain a motion?
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 16, a request of Michael C. Walters, a location scout manager with Intermart Group/ VASTA Studios, requesting that the one-time $1,000 application fee and the $5,000 refundable deposit be waived due to the fact that this is a filming project for the State of Alabama Department of Tourism. They're filming four separate 30-second commercials in the following locations in Alabama, Auburn Opelika area, Montgomery, Gulf Shores, Orange Beach, and Fairhope Eastern Shore. So with that, they thought that they would be promoting tourism and that they should ask to waive those. And we actually have an ordinance that says you can't, but, you know, Lisa called and go, this is one of those times. It makes sense, and I agree, so I put it on here. So I'll ask for a motion to waive the one-time application fee and refundable deposit?
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 17 is a resolution. I'll read this because this is not in your book. It says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope that the date for the 2019 Annual Magical Christmas Parade shall be set on Friday night, December 6, 2019. The annual parade shall start at approximately 7:00 p.m. on the said date. Notice of said date change shall be communicated to all prospective and actual applicants. Additionally, Fairhope's monthly traditional First Friday Art Walk shall be moved once to Saturday, December 7, 2019, as discussed in the work session." I will entertain a motion?
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 17 is a resolution. I'll read this because this is not in your book. It says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope that the date for the 2019 Annual Magical Christmas Parade shall be set on Friday night, December 6, 2019. The annual parade shall start at approximately 7:00 p.m. on the said date. Notice of said date change shall be communicated to all prospective and actual applicants. Additionally, Fairhope's monthly traditional First Friday Art Walk shall be moved once to Saturday, December 7, 2019, as discussed in the work session." I will entertain a motion?
Some move?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Next item is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth to the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes.
I'll be brief, Jay. I want you to get to that dinner. In 1895, Fairhope established one of the very first stormwater management districts in the United States and in the world, and it's handled a tremendous amount of urban density as it has advanced. A few years ago, the Single Tax Corporation took land that we had always considered unbuildable, and because of a change in the tax law with a forced pump sewer, they wanted to develop it. The citizens rose up and signed 2,250 signatures, most of them voters in Fairhope. In fact, 90% of them were voters in Fairhope to stop it. There's another plan that is being looked at. One of the arguments that I've been told is the city will not accept that land to put it into the stormwater management district. Let's leave something for these kids, so give them hope. I would like the Single Tax Corporation to, again, the city, to say that they would like to take that land, put covenants on it, just as we have protected covenants for almost 100 years now, that have worked and been fine on soil that is largely unstable and does not need to be developed. Thank you.
Mr. Mosher, did you say 1895?
1895.
1895. Was that the year you...
And then at the bottom of the Great Depression, and again, I want to be brief so we can get to his dinner, but at the bottom of the Great Depression, we were outnumbered 5 to 1 from single tax to deeded, so the land was given to the city with covenants to protect it. Want to see the same thing done now with the Tatumville parcel. We'll work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? They're almost too slow.
Yeah, just sorry about that. Tony Brecht, now in the LA Trendino. I'd just like to add to Dean Mosher's recommendation there. Reason I'd speak this evening is I'm out of town for the next five weeks, in and out, so I would, you know, not be able to communicate with you, but I think it's something that the city should seriously consider, and I would, you know, fully endorse. I've never always agreed with Dean in some of his proposals, but in this case, we're kind of hand-in-hand, so I, you know, appreciate your consideration for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, a quick apology to you. I'm going to belabor this just for one minute, and I would like to ask the planning staff, and Councilman Boone, you can back me up on this, I believe, is that, you know, I believe that we're still lacking in a red clay ordinance. There was a situation that occurred in which the county's red clay ordinance was enacted because it was more stringent than ours, and I think they have since repealed that red clay ordinance, and I think that we should resurrect the discussion of red clay ordinance. Would you concur with that, Councilman Boone?
Absolutely, plus the wetlands.
The wetlands ordinances as well.
That's correct.
Okay. I know the Environmental Advisory Board has been discussing that, and they've had some conversations with Eric. I don't know if he's still here, but I'm sure they'll want to at least take a look at that.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, the floor is still open for public participation.
I didn't mean to scare you all off, but my request for efficiency, bring it on if you got it.
You should have been quicker on the...
Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation. I'll close public participation and ask for a motion for adjournment.
Corey, I was kidding.
Yeah, I was going to say something because you asked me to.
Okay.
Hello, guys. How are you all doing today? Listen, you know, I know most of you all have already made up your mind as far as this land, and I've been going back and forth with this. I just think buying that, getting a down payment and buying that land on 32 is a little rushing it. I think we had a window. We had 40, we had 32, we had a window. I think that window has closed, and us trying to spend money from our savings or our capital funds where that money could be and ongoing capital for us, and we're putting it into dirt, and it's just sitting there, and we're not going to be able to develop it, and we could be making money on that money while we're waiting on to buy a piece of land when we're ready to develop it. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that we know that that's a possibility, that I think that's a waste of funds. I think there's other things that we could be using that money for. I know we have another plan to put the money into Volanta Park, and I think if we hold off, I don't know what the rush is on buying that when we got all these other things to do as far as city stuff, but if we hold off, I think we can do a better job even with Volanta instead of just buying pay dirt and sitting on it, you know? You know, to be personal, I would love for the field to be in Tatumville. I think everybody knows that, and I think we're spending money that we could have paid the guy over there to get, you know, and now we're spending money here, more money, for a larger piece of land, but we're not developing it, you know? We had opportunity to buy this land over here, and now we're not developing any of it. So I think that window has closed. So I think we should reconsider buying that piece of property over there and keep that money in our capital funds where it can earn money, and then come to a time to where we can buy a piece of land that everybody decides on instead of playing tug-of-war and develop it instead of just sitting on it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.